All right, well, thank you everyone for attending tonight's meeting of Sohegan Cooperative School Board. I want to thank everyone who offered support to our community. Reading the support given and seeing the outpouring of care gives me the strength that we believe in the values of Sohegan and caring for our families. And I believe this is a strength of Sohegan. So I want to say thank you to our staff, our guidance department for all the work that they did. Sorry. So I will get started with public input if anyone would like to come to the podium and turn the microphone on. Please go ahead. Okay, seeing no public comment, I do want to say I did receive a comment just a couple of minutes ago from one of our community members regarding curriculum. I will enter into the public record by sending it to our secretary, our recording secretary and to our superintendent to take care of the question regarding our curriculum. Reports received. Why don't we go down one by one, just in case there's any questions? Facility update, anyone have any comments about facilities? No? Okay, we'll have a J F A C update later. With information.
I think that was post this update.
Yes, so we do know that there's a potentially there's a skylight issue happening that Roger is on top of and we'll be looking at what the appropriate repairs are that need to be made. Yes. Any questions on treasurer's reports? And organizational chart, anyone have any questions on the organizational charts? Yes.
System, I didn't see, are groundskeeping facilities people, are they under the S A U office and not Sohegan? Or are they part of of your leadership structure, Mike? Reports to Roger, so it wouldn't be on here. Okay. That's it.
Anthony, any other questions? No? Okay. Principals report. Any questions on principals report? There was a lot of work done over the summer, so thank you. Lots of curriculum work and which we'll talk about later, also grading and reporting and instructional practice and anyone have any questions or Mike, is there anything you would like to say before?
No, as the report indicates, there was quite a bit of effort and energy put forth to making some adjustments and you know pivots and improvements on kind of how we operate at Sohegan High School. A lot of emphasis put on, you know, areas that we feel will improve the student and family experience around grading and reporting, around Saber Flex, around some communication work. And if you look through it, there's a lot of indication of collaboration between administration and teachers. You see the restructuring of the staff steering as a direct result of some feedback that we received as an admin team from teachers and in our own reflection, you look at some of the bigger things that, you know, that happened during the school or the the school year and the student's high school career like J L P, senior project work, this space learning commons, a lot of energy and time went into that to to make sure that we are adjusting from the last two years that we've had here during a time of a COVID and we get into what would hope to be a more typical, you know, high school experience. And 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 part of this is, you know, to have the collaboration between administration and staff, but also we want to put things in order to develop students academic, you know, capacity, you know, and and you know, coming back to school and getting used to having a more of a typical year. So there's lots of things in here that surround that type of type of work. I'm really pleased with, you know, Dana Curran, who's here tonight to talk about grading, reporting and the domain leaders and the people that are going to be on the instructional leadership team and the people on the staff steering that, you know, and other teachers that came up here to give so much time to to work to make sure we're ready to go for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And so that's kind of highlighted throughout here. And, you know, at this point, I'll take any questions that that people might have. But that's an overview a little bit.
Are there any questions for Mike?
I mean, it was mentioned briefly in in your report, so I'm just, I was curious as I walked in the door, what are the hours, how's the secure building working? And when does that apply? And I say that only because clearly I was able to walk in the other door, so it's not all the time, but can you talk to us a tiny bit about that and how that's working out and if that's?
Yeah, no, so we had an upgrade, you know, in in the front area of the building with a substantial project that has required us to kind of change the way the building operates, you know, during the school day. So what you'll see essentially is the front door, the front door, just let me walk this back. It's not the easiest thing to explain. I'm just gonna say. Between seven and eight thirty, you will find the three main entrances open to the building. You know, so all teachers and students can come in at eight thirty, front door and the side door by the flagpole is kind of locked. And that because that is, you know, at at eight, excuse me, nine o'clock. And so it stays locked. So the only way that, you know, students can move is between the annex side door and the by the cafeteria doors. Then in the evening, so that stays that way. And then the evening, the the door, the doors that stay open are the the door to the cafeteria coming in that way. So that's how people can access the building. And so it is an open campus. It has been an open campus for since the school opened. So you can come into the building through that entrance between, you know, three thirty and nine o'clock. So that's kind of how the building is set up right now.
And through the flagpole entrance? When?
Supposed to be between seven and nine.
Okay.
Seven A M, nine A M.
I just, it's it's open now. And I'm not necessarily complaining about that, but that was what made me just start wondering. I mean, it was more just a question on how that was working logistically and and what the process was.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that because that's not how it's supposed to be scheduled.
Okay.
You know, and so we'll we'll figure that out.
Thank you.
But that's a lot for us.
I think they unlock it when we have a meeting for us to be able to get in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the students aren't in the building per se.
Yeah, but we 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 can look into that. That could be why and that, but it was my understanding that the only access point is going to, am I wrong?
Our events after school, after after four, the the building opens. We had situations last year for basketball games, for example, or concerts or plays where all exterior doors would lock at four. And I had parents outside of the building locked out trying to get into events. So once students had exited the building, we have it set so that it's open for the community to be able to come in and access them.
Yeah, it was my understanding, the only door that was going to be open was going to be the cafeteria door. You know, so to access events at night unless there was a special occasion like in the theater, like a player or musical.
And I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not complaining about the fact I got in. It just made me start wondering because I'd seen the security. I knew we had it and I was just curious.
That's a fair question.
Plan was.
Yep.
Yep. Verification, right? All right, any other questions?
I have two.
Okay.
Just first off, this is really nicely laid out. I really appreciate the detail. You guys clearly did a lot of work. I also like the that the key leadership in the building is maybe not just your words, you're really relying on your your direct reports to put their input in here. Two things kind of jumped out at me. I know, I know that I think I know that you and Steve have been really looking at the schedule and trying to maximize the efficiency of the instructional time. And there wasn't a bullet or a paragraph about how that's going. So maybe in future, could you include that somewhere about, you know, whatever your thinking is currently on that? And then the the second piece specific is about the junior learning project and the learning common, or no, sorry, and the senior project. It says that you're you know, really starting to beginning to examine the current practice. So I just wanted to put some a thought out there as you examine the current practice that might be really helpful for the student experience if 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 the student was so inclined that they could begin that process as early as they saw fit. So any given student could, for example, do us a data gathering project as early as ninth grade to get a large empirical set of data and and roll that into a senior project. They could work throughout their high school career to find the right mentor. Instead of everyone starting even not yet in their senior year. Or at least explore that with everybody as they're at the end of their junior year. So maybe if there's a summer project that requires summer weather, that there's opportunities there. It's not a huge crush for everyone at the end of the year. And the same real comment, I guess, is is for the junior learning project. It's not as maybe as big as that. It's a little more focused, maybe not as applicable, but to the extent that you could inform rising or sophomores that this is coming early in their sophomore year so that they could at least have an opportunity to plan, I think would be helpful and you get a lot of better quality results after that. So thanks.
Thank you.
Good to come back to it because we're to cover that more detail with it later on. But in terms of the the late starts program for this year, can you talk to me a little bit about sort of like who's facilitating that? Like I see in the thing you've got, you know, obviously that's being shared with responsibility, you know, in terms of people showing up and actually engaging in that conversation in terms of legitimate stuff coming out of those those conversations. How are we collaborating with the other schools within such the broader S A U? Because I know the S A U is going to have discussions this year surrounding the effectiveness of these late starts. So revisiting with that actually looks like.
Yeah, we don't have any like kind of collaboration plan with A M S or or Amherst at this point. The way we intend to use our late start is to, you know, you know, kind of allow different groups to have that coveted two-hour block once a month. And so if you look, you have department meetings where that will be you know, instructional leadership team, meaning leading departments in in work on on those days. Then you will have the staff steering committee group working with me when it's allowed it on those days to lead meetings during the late starts. Staff collaboration time, that's the adult learning, that's the community of practice time where they come together around projects that are relevant to their position, their subject matter, their interest level, the work that where they're where they're focusing on this year that of their choice. And in the previous years, that's really where all the late starts were used, like C F G used to, you know, the the different groups. And then you see targeted building P D, that is where the administration, dean of faculty, dean of students, domain leaders come together and work with the staff on on topics that are relevant to the whole school. And so we've divided that up as equally as possible. So we can use that time in in meaningful manners while each group gets to have some focus time at the late starts.
And then you're leveraging the domain leads and the administrators to then make sure that there's something that's tangible and executable out of those sessions.
Yeah, you know, yeah, so it, you know, you know, Dana can talk a little bit about it as she kind of gets into grading and reporting and weave in some of the the work that we're doing. But a lot of our focus will be on grading and reporting and instructional strategies. And you'll see those themes, whether it's a department meeting, the targeted building P D meeting. And then when you get into like staff meetings, that's kind of culture and climate stuff. That's us working with the teachers on initiatives and issues that are relevant to them. And that's based on survey data that was from last year and we'll be planning that out. They will be facilitating that meeting. And then there's a different group that will be facilitating the C O P time. So we kind of divided it up the best we can to make sure we are covering all our areas of of focus and and areas that we need to work on.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So I actually have a couple of questions. Graduation requirements, one of the things was in there. Can you just discuss a little bit about what's driving the change, what we might see, what what the thoughts are?
Yeah, yeah. And you know, for me, I'll I'll turn it over to Dana because she's going to be leading some of that work with her group. But the gist of it is now the graduation requirements have not have remained the same for over twenty years. Right? And right now, the New Hampshire minimum diploma requires twenty credits. So he can requires twenty-two. Two credits you get for advisory. So essentially, we have a twenty-credit diploma plus advisory that's been the same for decades. We want to revisit it, graduation requirements for a couple of reasons. I have students have more opportunities to create competitive transcripts, opportunities to take classes of their choice, opportunities to use the thirty-two chunks of time here as meaningful as as they as they can as they design it. We want to create also an intellectually challenging experience for our students if they if they choose to do that. And there's different ways you can kind of get towards that. So we're going to start that process about looking at our, you know, graduation requirements, we're going to start that process and in collaborate, you know, collaboration as a as a staff. And there's more information to come on that, but that's the premise behind it. We're very much in the early stages of that, knowing that there's it's time to do an examination of that.
Great, thank you. Can you describe the that learning commons initiative? I'm not sure everyone's understands what the learning commons is being used for now and what's driving.
Yeah, so we're sitting in one one of three spaces of the learning commons. And we put our student achievement coordinator, E L O coordinator in this, they're housed in in the space in between this room and and what used to be the writing center. And what we wanted to create is a hub of of the building between here and the info center over the next few years. And this is something that was in the works pre-COVID. You know, this is not a new thing to Sohegan, but we want students to use their time here during their free periods and during their their other class periods where they can have a place where they can work on their senior project, they can work on their V L A C project, then get writing support, they can get S A T prep support, they can come down here in small groups. They can come down here for math tutoring. We're going to, you know, staff it with, you know, adults, we have one full-time adult, we have a paraprofessional in here, we're going to have tutors in here that kids can drop in during the time or teachers can send their classes that might need a little more targeted focus to be in here. Our hope, it becomes a place that's really, really like kind of flourishing. It's there's a lot of different options. There's things that students can do here, multiple different things. So you have all grade levels, all different type of learning abilities, all type of motivational, you know, abilities in here using their time grappling with their free time. So they can use this place and and you know, to become whatever students they want to be. And so that's the that's the gist of it. Matt McDonald is that person in that position. Very pleased with kind of the work that he did over the summer with his team of people. And, you know, we're excited to see where that goes with that. But this is where we started.
Great. Great, thank you for, thank you for that information. One other, oh, two other things in your report, just athletics, I'm glad Kelly's here. One thing I would ask is that on the report that says the students, when they're how early they're being dismissed is if we can add when they're actually dismissed from class, not when the bus is actually leaving. Because I think there's a difference and it'll give us a little different perspective.
Yeah, just you, we can get that to you, but just think fifteen minutes. If the bus is leaving at two forty-five, kid is just missed at at two thirty. And we'll get that written down and we know it's a.
Not a big deal, but it's. Okay. I'll talk, okay, because I saw a bus leaving at a time. I'm not going to get this, it's no details. That's all I'm looking for. Perfect.
Be sure, but that's the intent of that.
Perfect. My other, my one other concern is media day is the same time as club time. It's pretty much overlaps and the freshmen and sophomore who would get to learn about the clubs that are the club time is going to be after school. They're going to be going to change into their uniforms, everything for media day. They're not going to have a chance to actually go explore the club. So I'm a little concerned and wondering if we can have it at a different day or a different time. I'm not sure it's going to.
Well, we'll have to look at that about the the time that it overlaps. We can look into that to see.
Yeah, because I think after school, I'm afraid it's not going to get the look from kids and putting it on top of media day and also a little worry about not enough. So other than that, the only thing I want to point out to everybody, there is information sessions and I'm sure you'll bring it up today, tonight too. But any grading changes, there's going to be information or I'm not sure, are you going to be available on Tuesday before, so on voting day when it's a late start from seven thirty, eight fifteen, there'll be people here to answer questions on grading. There's also going to be information session from five to six on September twenty-ninth. Is there anything that could be recorded in case someone can't make those times?
I think we'll definitely have PowerPoint slides that we we'll send out.
Perfect. And we're going to talk about tonight too, so give people.
We're also capturing all the questions that we're getting to make like a catalog of F A Qs.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, that's all I have. Anyone else before I?
Just one thing for me about the athletics. It's, I appreciate the mission statement or the vision, all of that strategic plan. I like the emphasis on, you know, academics first and your ideas in there about growing participation and not just from student athletes, but also community. I think that's really good. Did I understand that you also are kind of managing club life as well as part of your, okay? So I wonder if there's something similar to to or the clubs that you could put together. I don't know, there'd be a whole lot different. But or to incorporate that into the existing structure would be would be fine. And kind of to to Stephanie's point, you know, that having the club day on the and the media day, I think she's right, on the same day, it kind of pits both against each other. So it would be nice for students who wanted to do both that they felt like they could and were supported with the strategic strategy and with the coaches to good communications that they have to show up late for a practice one or two days a week, that kind of. Thanks.
I don't know, before we move off this, if you want to present the concussion information.
Yeah.
To meet the requirement of the policy.
Oh, great. Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. It's my fault that.
No, no, no.
So this, the the report to the board regarding concussion is in one of our policies to report on September. So at least this will. I'm good. Thank you. So this does meet that, but move connect. There's also reaching out to the other districts. Kelly goes great start connecting with people. So Mike and Kelly, thank you for your quick attention to this. I appreciate it. If there's any questions or comments. But thank you for following up on following that policy.
All right. Great.
And we'll have a tickler in our calendar.
Every September.
Yes, to make sure it's on the agenda and in the packet ahead of time. But at least September, though, we're doing all right.
Right.
And and enrolling like the history to continue to stay.
Yeah.
On there. That's.
Yeah.
A trend will be interesting.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. So we'll I don't know if there's any off the cuff questions or we just need time to take a look at it and we can follow up with any questions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, no, appreciate that quick response. That was awesome. Consent agenda, we have our draft minutes. Anyone have any changes that need to happen to draft minutes? No? All right, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Christie Peters, Peters motions, can I have a second? Ten seconds, we don't need a roll call, all in favor. Hi, and that would be none opposed? Oh, no.
I'll abstain just because I wasn't that then.
And Mr. Glover abstains.
Yep.
So that will pass. And community council update.
All right, so today during lunch, community council actually started our our physical recruiting operation outside of just freshman social studies classes where we described community council's purpose. We're trying to get, you know, at-large candidates from the community, staff, students. Last year, we did have some issues filling out large positions. So if we don't have enough applications by the time that, you know, at-large elections are starting to roll around, I am going to be going out in the community personally and just begging people. Other than that, we have started building our bonfire out back for our homecoming game tomorrow. As you probably know, we are moving away from Hope for Gus, requests of the Dreher family and we are going to be start moving towards clause for a cause, which is more of a community oriented organization. This year, we're going to be donating to N sixty-eight Hours of Hunger as well as the Milford Share Operation. So we'll hopefully be able to run food drives, clothing drives, things like that during this year. And we'd really just like to extend our greatest thanks to Dreher family for being able to provide us with some of the leftover funds from the Hope for Gus operations so that we can kickstart this organization.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone have any questions about community council? And your first meeting for community council is I saw it October meeting, but I don't know if a September meeting's been.
I think we have a September meeting to elect our at-large members. I can check the calendar real quick.
Okay.
There's an evening meeting.
October.
Yeah, that would.
I don't know if that was definite yet or not. That was, that's the only reason I'm asking, just so everyone knows we're getting community council.
I'm also going to have to double check with executive council just to make sure that freshmen who don't win their elections but still want to run for an at-large position have the time to help them that to run.
Okay.
That's all.
Great, thank you. I think in just to help our staff who's here, who's been here all day, we're going to move up the grading and reporting presentation to happen now instead of at the end of our meeting. So she could go home. Thank you.
And just give me a sec.
No worries. I'm I'm great to wait.
Share my screen.
Yeah. There is stuff on the screen. Stephen, yeah.
Yeah, we're.
There you go.
Think we're good. Thank you for your patience with the tech director over here.
Thank you for serving in that role. Um. All right, so this is just something that I put together that really just kind of pulls out the most important information from the from the principal's report with all the linked documents because you had the full narrative of everything. So this is meant to serve as more of an overview to help guide our questions and conversation. And this is also work that we started last year through information gathering and then a lot of different people came together over the summer to to actionize this. So want to really send a lot of kudos to all the staff that were part of this grading and reporting team that met twice over the summer and then all through retreat and continue to serve as kind of the ambassadors of this work as we communicate it out. So where we started with this work was was really to go and revisit the purpose of grades. So S A U thirty-nine in the grading and reporting handbook does communicate what the purpose of grades are. I won't read them to you, but really it's all about communicating students' academic performance for the various stakeholders in in ways that will allow them to do what they need to do with that information, right? So it's for students to be able to set goals and self-assess and do all those work, study, practice habits that we know are important. It's to make sure that parents understand where their students are at so that they can actively engage with the school and the learning that's happening in the classrooms. It's to help our teachers know where their students are at so that they can provide in the moment in the moment accommodations or differentiation to help their planning. And it's also important for us to be able to communicate to places outside of Sohegan as students transition on to post-secondary options. So one of the big things that we did last year was gather a lot of feedback from folks as to how we were delivering on this, on on these on these purposes. Because really we recognize that of all the professional responsibilities we have, assigning grades is arguably the most consequential for our students as they go to transition on into life. So the consistent theme that came up last year from staff, students and families was the difficulties that we were experiencing with the previous grading and reporting systems. We made great strides by transitioning away from empower to power school. That alone was not enough to solve the world's problems. And so this is, this is kind of where we are now. So in this next slide, um, on this next slide, important for us to keep in mind is that while these is while these updates are are separated nicely into three buckets, that's really for ease of communicating. That's really for ease of communicating what they are. They are all interconnected, right? So, so for example, updates to reporting calculations impact our score conversion. Both of which are dependent upon updated expectations and communication practices. We can't do any of these without the other thing. So updated practices and expectations, updated reporting calculations and updated core score conversions. Is all what's coming together to help us realize the communicated purpose of grades, right? We want to make sure that this system accurately and easily communicates student learning to all of our stakeholders. So this first bucket that we're talking about, this first category that we're talking about are updated practices and expectations. So the essential features of these changes are that we've instituted a, a late work practice, right? So each course has great, a grace period in which it is acceptable for students to submit late work for credit. Important to know from this is that. The grace periods are set between one and four weeks and are determined by teachers of the same course. So anybody who's taking an American Studies course is gonna have the same grace period. It is also the case that certain departments, as they came together and collaborated. You'll, you'll learn that some departments have decided that they were gonna be department-wide policies. So our math department has decided on a two-week grace period for all of our math classes. That does really make it easy for everybody to understand. So that's something that we're continuing to track. What you, what you should know from this, when students hand in work by the due date, they can reassess these things. In, in accordance with the reassessment practices, which I can talk about. They get a four on their SDL and punctuality, so self-directed learning and punctuality. If students are handing in something within the grace period. It is accepted for credit. It is not available to be reassessed at that point. Again, with, with an eye towards the learning progression and process. And they would receive a two in their SDL score for punctuality. And then things that are submitted after this, after the grace period. Are not accepted for credit and not for reassessment are, will be provided feedback on. So we still can progress through that, through that and get the feedback from teachers. And there will be a, a one in SDL for punctuality, so self-directed learning. It's not a zero because we do have evidence, right? That they're not able to meet this punctuality deadline, so that is serving as evidence, so that's why it's a one. Really, the importance here is that timely work submission provides everyone with a clear understanding of students' academic. Progress in the course and it allows us to continue in the learning cycle in meaningful ways. Reassessment, we've also taken a look at the reassessment practices of the school. We firmly believe that reassessment and remediation cycles are an essential aspect for student growth. So it is really our desire that students continue to show grit, that they engage in the initial learning. That they learn from what they did and that they have the opportunities to continue to grow and advance and that we honor that. What you'll see features of this is that students have the opportunity to reassess eligible assignments. Once within a predetermined timeframe. And that predetermined timeframe, again, similarly is set by teachers of the same course. And again, some departments have set the same thing. A new feature this year is that we have a reassessment form. Part of the work was looking at kind of best practices around reassessment. Because reassessment is what's best for kids, we do know that. And so we were exploring, you know, how, how is this executed? So we have a really comprehensive assessment form for the whole school that we're asking students to complete within four days of getting something back. So you get back this paper that you wrote and within four days, you just want to submit this form to your teacher. Showing your intent to reassess and, and creating a plan together, a collaborative plan together. About how you're going to do better this time. What needs to happen in order for you to show growth in this area? So again, that's a common form for our school. There are some reflection opportunities in that form. Reflection is a cornerstone of what we ask students to do at Sohagen. So some of those reflection questions might vary based on content area. But the form itself and the parameters around it remain the same. The communication is, I, I, I don't think I could overstate the importance of communication. In general for schools, but particularly as it relates to all of the grading and reporting. What we are endeavoring to do is increase communication and transparency around our expectations for students and, and their progress. So. According to our purpose, grades are meant to be a communication tool. So it has to be really clear to people how students are earning these grades. And so consistency with messaging is a huge focus for us. I'll talk about that in a minute. And it's also about a multi-pronged approach. We have differentiated our communication according to stakeholders. So what can parents expect from administration? What can they expect from teachers? What can students expect? What can we expect from students? And then also considering the vehicles for communication. We've also made some enhancements to Power School to allow us to better communicate some of these things. In addition to making sure that we are providing education for students through their classes. Through some saber spotlights eventually. Through drop-in sessions like Stephanie had mentioned, hosting parents to come in. We are planning to keep it a common space in our Sohagen scoop newsletter. Around grading and reporting so that this, this remains kind of in the forefront of our minds. The next piece. The next kind of category are enhancements that we've made in terms of the reporting calculations. This is really for increased clarity and accuracy. It kind of felt like. We entered these numbers into this little black box and then all of a sudden some other number came out. And you had to have a degree in math to understand what percentages and where did the decaying average happen? And what place were we rounding to? And it was very, very complicated. And it. All of these changes are really the direct result of a need for clearer communication around this progress. So it was really unacceptable to us that people didn't understand how a grade was calculated. And so this is really the majority of this, of these changes have to do with how Power School is programmed. The most significant change in this area is the scoring of assignments. At the competency level rather than the standard level. And that's about kind of getting the grain size right for authentic learning activities, right? A core score to just say you got a four in math, doesn't tell the student enough about themselves as a math, as a math learner. And it doesn't tell the teachers enough. But trying to score every single standard that you might be basing your curriculum around is too, too fine of a grain to be actionable. So grading on the competency level allows us to get that grain size right and be more authentic for students and what they're doing. So that's the reporting calculations. The, the final piece is the ups, uh, updated score conversion. This is by far the most talked about change. By far, in regards to the, the final real, realignment. So, right, students are earning scores. Zero to four. On their competencies as they complete things. At the very end of the year is when this becomes a thing, right? Students don't turn in something and get an A on it. That's not how it works. But at the end of a course, whether it be at the end of semester one or at the end of the year. That final calculation is translated into a letter grade so that we're reporting out to, to colleges mostly. Under the previous system. Four, three, two, one was mapped to A, B, C, N, C in a nonlinear way. So you can see how an A plus is a four, an A minus is a three, and a two is a C minus. Right? So this results in an uneven distribution of potential letter grade scores for students. For example, the A range of point four eight and the, and the B and C range of point one six under the previous system. But really what this meant is that grades for students were volatile. And this meant that a single assignment, the day before grades close could. Could potentially in some cases change a student's final score by two letter grades because the buckets are so small down there. So. We have addressed this issue through the realignment of the score to letter grade using a linear scale. I have become such a better math student as a result of this work. Y equals M X plus B. That's it, right? You, you learn that in middle school and that is it. We're doing it. There's your authentic application of this thing that you learned and you thought you'd never use. I have used it. Really what this does is create a more even distribution of ranges. But most importantly, it means that at the end of the year, a student's final grade should be more predictable. It should be more valid and more of, more of a stable indicator of their achievement. What is very important for everyone to understand and why this is the most talked about piece is that this is not simply a deflation of students' grade. Right? That is this, that is, if we were to parse all these changes out and not take them for the package deal that they are. One could easily make that assumption. That is not what's happening. Rather, the scale and the expectations are being realigned in concert with each other. So work that previously exceeded expectations is going to continue to exceed expectations, right? Teachers have been taking these updates into account in all areas of their professional craft. So this impacts everything. It impacts their instruction, their rubric revision, their scoring practices, their communication practices. All of these things have to work in concert to allow this to be successful with students and families. So if you go to the next slide, this is just. This is super small. It's not really meant to be read. I can share them with you. But really, it's just an example of how, of, of the work that, that staff is doing around realigning expectations and rubrics, right? People are talking about making sure that not only have we updated things with this grade scale in mind in terms of the expectations. But that also, the rubric language is really easy to understand. What we also found with some of our rubrics, the kids just don't know what this means, right? They don't know. So if it's not in student-friendly language, then the rubrics aren't meeting their target audience's need. So, so that, so some of the revisions have to do with the realignment of expectations and some of it have to do with making sure those expectations are really clear. Also making sure it's very clear to, to students how they can achieve a four, right? Not just teaching to the three, but really understanding if, if this is your goal, this is how I can help you do that. So that's, that's a big part of this work. On the next slide. So feedback so far from students, families and teachers. Feedback from students so far does really seem to vary depending on their grade level. So for example, freshmen, great, this is part of my transition to high school. This is different than AMS anyway. Okay, cool. Seniors are understandably anxious because it's a change and they're getting ready to leave this place. And I got lots of stuff going on and now you just added this other thing. What we have found and what we're really trying to do is students are really reassured. Knowing that reassessment is still a, a foundational core of this work. And also, once we're able to explain to them all the ways in which we're supporting them to achieve whatever goal they have in mind. Your goal is an A plus, I'm still gonna teach you how to, how to get there. And so we have a lot going on this week. One of the things we endeavored to do in advisory this week was a structured conversation around this. That's probably gonna happen next week. And then we also hope that maybe some students come to those drop-in sessions that are before and after school. That's kind of why we put them, where we put them, because we figured people will be in and out. The most positive. Feedback around this right now is from families and teachers. It's been really nice after many years of not receiving really great emails because of COVID, not because of anything else. To get so many emails from parents saying how appreciative they are around the communication that teachers have done, right? We, I talked about how communication was a piece that we were gonna work on and our teachers have delivered above and beyond. With communicating their expectations for students and how they can achieve what they need to achieve. So Mike and I receive a lot of those emails, but a lot of them are going directly to staff as well. Which is just a really fabulous way to start the year and it's really great validation for the work that they've done. Because the feedback from the teachers is thank you for doing this. These are changes we've been asking for for quite a while. And so this is like, thank you for these changes and I put in all these work for these changes and I'm starting to reap the. I'm already, it's the second week of school and I'm reaping the rewards of that. So that's been really great as well. Ongoing work. As the group met this summer, we started to really talk about the interconnectedness of everything. And really, work, study, practices is a piece that touches all of this. So we as a school have more work to do with work, study practices. And we, we need to be partnering with students around work, study practices. And so that's our ongoing work for the building this year. So some of that targeted PD time that we have will be dedicated to working around how are we? How are, what are our expectations for students in terms of work, study practices? How are we assessing them in ways that are authentic to them as students? And what they're, what we're trying to do at the high school with them? And then communication, I, I think, I hope you see it everywhere because it's. It, it's gonna be everywhere. It's not done, right? We, yes, we communicated all of our expectations in our syllabus. Yes, we sent intro emails to everybody, but that's, that will not be it. So we're, that will be ongoing work for us, kind of at all levels. That's it.
So first of all, thank you. Thank you for all this work. I know I was one of them that asked many times. And I, I appreciate all the dedication work that you and all of us, the staff have done for this. And the communication is absolutely essential, so that's great. So does anyone have any questions?
Oh, good.
Go for the easy one first.
My only question is, will students be able to know where they are within the grade period? Not that you're giving the A, B, C, D, L, that, well, I don't know duties, anyway. But that they would be able to have a pretty good sense of what they'll expect on that report?
Yes, so there's, there's a button that had been toggled off last year. So, you know, we have that chart, that conversion chart that says, okay, if you have a three point five, it's this. And we had that toggled off all last year because that was a, that was a function of the previous system was to not display that until the, the final piece. But a lot of conversations with kids and with families and with parents, there's no sense in toggling it off if you can just go look it up. Right? It's just, you're just making it harder for people to understand. So that button will not be toggled off this year, so that will be there. Part of the communication around this is also the expectation that we started last year that we're gonna continue and, and follow up on. Is that we're updating Power School the first and the fifteenth of every month. So it doesn't, you know, if there's no assignments, there's no assignments. But if there are, that they're being updated by the first and the fifteenth of every month. We're also working really hard to let families and students know immediately when something has not been turned in, right? So if this deadline happens today and I don't have it, I want, we want to get that information into Power School as quickly as possible so that people know. Because the clock will start on the, on the grace period. So that's another piece. All of that goes down, goes into communication.
Can I just, I might just jump one question off of that particular piece? So one of the, one of the, the questions that a lot of people have in their mind is, are we, are we still gonna see two out of twos, three out of threes? Or is everything out of a four? Because when that conversion goes for the fall for those seniors applying to college.
Yep.
Those transcripts go out.
Yep.
There's two out of twos that can distort.
Yeah. Yeah, so yes, there's, so M, MAS, which is maximum achievable score. I'm sorry that anyone ever learned that term. It, that's not, that, that is not a function of the system anymore. MAS is, is very important instructional and assessment tool for teachers as they're building their assessments. It's not a necessary tool for when we're communicating out on their progress. So everything's out of a four.
Other question. So, various people. I saw Dan's earlier, sorry.
It's okay. I have five.
I just wanna kind of express gratitude for it. I mean, this was something that I've heard about, that I've experienced. And I know that it was something that was. Giving, giving you guys a lot of grief. You were getting a lot of negative feedback about it and, you know, I, I love how fast you turned this around. Just, and how well thought out it is, the more you say, the happier I become. You know, every question you answer, so I, I know this is probably gonna be, continue to be a work in progress and, but I think you've made huge strides. And I, I'm happy as can be about it.
Thank you for that, I have to say, because you mentioned the quick turnaround, it feels like an eternity. But this is the work of many people. This is the work of many people in our building. And our domain leaders have lived and breathed this with me for the last year and a half. So. And all the folks that were in the summer and all the staff that stopped down to express their frustrations or ask a question. This is so many people's work.
John, you had?
I have a few. Um. Stephanie touched on one, which was the, I didn't even know it was an acronym, Maxible Achievable Score, but okay. So to say it differently, um. Teachers can still offer two out of two, three out of three building type assignments. They just won't be put into the calculation. It won't be, they weren't, they're nothing. They're, they're, they're building blocks. Okay. How does um weighted grading fit into this infrastructure?
Um, so like the weighting of the GPA?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's a, that's a separate from this, this structure because the GPA, right at the end of at the end of the year, once all the credits are are there, we have our GPA scale. Um, and the, and anything that is considered a college level course, so AP or dual enrollment classes get weighted with an additional point. So that's
So whatever this is, plus the weight. Okay, so it's simple.
Yes, well.
I mean, it it does not woven into intricately, you just add it to it. Okay. Uh, what, I think I saw in your documents that you're rounding to the hundredth.
Yes.
Which makes sense with there. And so that must mean, so how many significant digits are you, are you taking before you get to the round? Or thousandth or ten thousandth or hundred thousandth place to figure out where you are at the thousandth place. Right?
Yes, yes. I'm laughing only because like this is just, I I learned more about this than I ever thought I would learn about this topic. So thank you for the opportunity to share my knowledge. Um. The uh, teachers, when teachers are grading a competency, right? You've turned this and I'm gonna grade it on these competencies. They will still only enter grades to the point five.
That was my next question.
They will still only enter grades to the point five because you can't differentiate broader than seven buckets of things, right? So for a person to be able to tell, I know we don't use eighty fives, I'm gonna I'm gonna confuse everybody by saying this, but to tell the difference between eighty five and eighty six, there, there is no difference between that. So that's why we're sticking with, we're grading on the point fives, right? All of those then continue after, after you enter them in, when they're all being averaged together, stays at the hundreds.
Oh, okay. So it stays at the hundreds. Okay. Um, and then what rounding rule is it using? There's two. You round up at when it's at five or is it an even rule to to get away from uh statistical bias?
I, hmm, I don't wanna say the wrong thing. I don't wanna misspeak, so I wanna preface this by telling you I'm fairly certain that we're rounding up.
From five, so if it's
Five, but I'm gonna write it so that if I'm wrong, I'm correct.
Right, so three point four nine five would round up to a three point five oh.
Right.
Probably.
Yes, most likely. The other piece is, um, we've learned through this process. Um, somebody that I didn't mention yet, who is so important, I'm so sorry that I didn't mention her, is Galen. Galen Tremblay, um, data and budget analyst. This, none of this would be possible without her because we have to customize every bit of Power School to make any of this possible. Um, and so she has spent countless hours trying to figure out rounding and if you don't put it, if you don't allow this input, then you can't get this output. It's been so much work and she has done a tremendous job. Um, so I'm gonna check with her on that.
Awesome. Thank you. And then just, this is all going forward. There's no retroactivity to, to any of this system. Okay, and just to echo what Dan said and and Stephanie, I mean, really great. This is, this is the progress we were, been looking for for a long time. It seems like a simple solution, but I I appreciate all the work that went into getting here and hopefully once this is set and locked in, we really, really won't have to work on it ever again, if it makes sense.
Yes, I hope. That's the hope.
So bravo. Thank you.
Presentation actually brings me back to conversation you and I had back in March of last year about the old system not being designed for high schools. And bringing something to the table where it does relate well with a student that's trying to go through a four-year program to then move on to the next phase of their life. So thank you. I'm gonna echo what everyone else said. Awesome job. Um, I'm really happy for that year. The number one complaint that I think I heard from everybody last year is the grade recording. Um, I've got two questions and then two comments. So the first one is the weight of the SDL score versus other parts of the grade. Would a student be better off actually delaying the submission of their?
We've talked about this a lot. Yeah, yeah, we've talked about
Going in on it, not be a bracket versus turning it in, be very poor, then go in and
Right, we've, 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 we discussed this issue at length with teachers. Um, because am I just gonna hurry up and turn something in so I can be sure to be able to reassess it? Or am I gonna take the time that it takes to do the right thing the first time? And so that's a little bit nuanced with kids, right? Uh, as teachers are working with kids, right? If you know you're not, i- i- it is around instruction on those work study practices. If you know you're not gonna hit a deadline, what are the things that we can do to work together to make sure that you're gonna be okay in the end? Um, difference between I, you know, I've started this and I, and I got stuck and I stalled and so this is what I have and I'm turning it in and it's not my best work versus I just didn't do this at all. And so here's a sentence I wanna be able to reassess. Those are nuanced things for teachers to continue to work on with students. Um, in terms of the self-direction, the self-directed learning scores and the WSPs, right now that those WSPs are not calculated into a student's course score, right? They're reported out separately. It's reported out as a separate score. Self-directed learning. Self-directed learning is currently comprised of punctuality, its own thing, goal setting. And one other thing that I can't think of, um, and then uh, the other one that we're assessing students on right now is collaboration. Um, and so those get their own separate scores, but all the scores that that teachers are inputting there are averaged, straight average.
The next thing, I have a question about this because we're changing the way we're actually scoring now. So when we take a look at that data, right, so a student, let's say their junior year got really all As because they fell within side that portion of the actual scale. Now applying to college, first quarter of two thousand twenty-two, now they're all Bs. Then they need to now articulate to the school as to why maybe their grades fell. How are we communicating that on the transcript to make sure that a student isn't negatively impacted by us changing this?
So, so a couple of things I wanna, I wanna reiterate only because I think it's, it's a pervasive notion that just because you got an A last year, doesn't mean you're automatically getting a B this year, right? Because there's, because work that exceeded expectations is going to continue to exceed expectations. So that's really important. It might be that you scored, you know, you got an A minus because you scored a three point oh last year. You're gonna get an A minus this year, but that's just a three point five, right? So I just wanna be super clear about that. Um, but in terms of how we're communicating it, um, it is going, it's in our school profile, but also on the transcript. Um, for those students who will be impacted by this, this is not impact our seniors because their transcript doesn't currently report out the number grades. But uh, for um, for the juniors and the sophomores, it will show both. It will show like pre this time, pre and then current. And so they'll be clearly delineated where we report out on the transcript, what the conversion is. So it'll be right there.
The next thing, just two quick comments. Is there a way that we can structure in um uh, like, let's say a quarterly check-in with kids because they were so accustomed in the past um of having the ability, the ability to turn things in all the way up to the last day of the quarter. Submitted and then still be able to pass the class. That clearly is no longer the case. And by the way, thank you for the communication, sit down. I've got seven emails from several different classes, all spot on the same message. So it's uniformed and I really, really liked that actually. Uh, but how can we go ahead and support the student that this is going to be a significant change, the way that they've experienced their three years, their two years, their four years of high school and how things have actually been going in the past.
Right, so this absolutely goes back to something that Mike um spoke about in the very beginning, which is, you know, how are we helping students to develop their academic stamina again? Right? Not just because it's a new grade, a new grading policies, but also because COVID and, you know, all of that. Um, so I, this comes down to communicate expectations around communication. So it's, teachers are you will see teachers working with, with students around these deadlines, being extremely clear, remember these deadlines, here's this thing. Um, we do have, you know, we do have our SST team and our stu- and our um student learning coordinator that is using student learning data to have these conversations in a, the most proactive way possible so that we're not putting ourselves in a waiting to fail position with kids and then we are checking in with kids. Our counselors are also really great at doing that. Um, so I think all of those things are gonna come together around that. And then we will continue with the same um, the same practice as before, which is those uh quarterly progress reports at least. So the grades will still be rolling. Um, but you'll get that quarterly report, which is that snapshot in time. The other piece is if we are entering assignments as missing right away. Right? It was due, it was due today and I let the student know by tomorrow that it's not there. That is alerting everybody that there is an issue, right? So that's, that's the other piece of communication that we're trying to use.
And so there's a system to go ahead and track those students.
Correct, correct. The other piece that I didn't mention that I do wanna mention because it was an issue for us is um, a feature of the reassessment and how we're communicating that. Previously, um, when a student would reassess, we weren't always communicating out that this was their second or third or seventh attempt at reassessment. There was just a, a final score. Um, and so now when things are gonna, when things are reassessed, there'll be a code in Power School that will denote the fact that this was a reassessment. So it will the final score will replace the initial score, but it'll also be very clear that this was a, uh, this was a reassessment attempt again. Accuracy and validity in communication.
And then my last point is, is there a way, and I wanna put more work on your, on your plate, but is there a way that you can package your presentations, like the formula video, proactively send it out to all parents, all stakeholders? Um, within the next couple of weeks, because I think the presentation you made tonight is gonna be extremely helpful, like Stephanie had talked about. Um, having community forums where people can come in, we're not gonna capture it that way. However, if we push this out in a video by email to every single parent that we have in that email address or they literally can click play, understand now the new context of our reporting structure. And then if they have additional questions, they can reach out to you or maybe the individual teacher or something like that. Just continue with our
One hundred percent. I became very proficient in Screencastify during COVID. So I absolutely, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, so one thing I wanna say is, so the rubrics, you answered my, one of my questions. I was wondering if you're gonna change the rubrics because you kinda have to change the rubrics if you're changing the grading system. So I was glad to hear that. And then if you can just clarify for transcripts, so if I'm looking at a student transcript who's been here two years or three years. And now we're gonna get a transcript this year as, we're gonna have different grading systems on the same transcript or are we gonna see an A as an A? Like everything gets transferred in A as an A.
Um, yeah, we currently have on the transcript, it, there's a, there's a spot that says like GPA scale. Yeah, really, it's the GPA scale, but it's also the conversion for the number to the letter grade. Um, and so there will just be an additional call, one additional column there that's labeled with the dates of when this conversion was, was in effect.
Okay, yeah, cuz that, that
Absolutely.
For a few years, right? Okay.
I have a, just a couple more. Um, that Stephen had some really good points about, you know, people gaming the reassessment. Phase uh, or and then this notion of developing academics stamina. And I agree with him that, that, and I think it's a good thing. It's more real world, you know? You get fired if you don't know, it's your deadlines. You just don't get a, get a redo all the time. So, um, that's good. And it just, it just made me think of, of like the, what type of flick that asks this question. There's an answer yet, but maybe it's part of the nuance of how this is gonna develop and mature over time, but seems that, um, you know, there's gotta be some sort of flexibility. When the teacher presumably knows the student and is gonna be able to feder out whether or not they're getting gamed or not, or the student's really putting work into it. Um, and along those lines, like and that's the whole purpose of competency-based education really is, is it's not about the time when you learn. It's about do you, can you master the skill? Not about when you master it. So uh, a student that might be struggling in the middle of a class, of a course, maybe not putting in very good work, the reassessments aren't going well and then all of a sudden, they're writing amazing A plus level for uh, papers towards the end, their, their final work product, they're acing the math exams and so on and so forth, and clearly they got it. So the question is, should that, does that student deserve some deference? Uh, or some recognition of that growth in their final letter grade? That may be completely outside of, if the average of all the assessments might put them at like C level work or B minus level work, but clearly it's demonstrated that they've mastered the skill, they mastered the course and they're ready to move on at a, at a high level. So I, I don't, I don't know if there's an answer to that, but that's, it strikes me as, um, that, that, that maybe there needs to be some kind of mechanism for justification for maybe some kind of exception to the, to the normal course or the normal expectations of regular growth by students on a schedule set by the school or the course when they themselves might, it might click um on their own schedule.
I don't think I, there's an answer for that.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right.
And I'm just gonna add, this has been the work since we, since twenty twenty, March of twenty twenty. Uh, upon a, a arrival to South Hegan and my role as principal from students, from parents, from teachers, other stakeholders. I just wanna under, I want everyone to understand the monumental lift that it took to go from there in March of twenty twenty. When we were in empowered and we were in the system to here. And we're gonna continue to examine it and reflect on it and collaborate with students and teachers and and admin. Um, but I, I just really need to echo that this has been the work of many. And um, I appreciate it. I'm excited about where it, it can be. It's gonna be more of an accurate reflection of a student's, student's body of work while at South Hegan. Um, and it's gonna be something that can be understood by students and families and something implemented and implemented by teachers. And uh, I couldn't be more pleased with where we are right now. And so I, I, I appreciate the work of, of Dana and and the domain leaders and the teachers and I, I appreciate the patience of uh, of the students and the families, they've grappled with a few different iterations of this. Um, but we wanna have an accurate reflection of what people do while they're at South Hegan High School.
Also, domain leaders tuning in to make sure that this went well. Uh, let me know that yes to John's rounding question. It is the way that I said that.
Rounding up, okay.
Thank you for those watching. I mean, I, I see a hand in our, in our audience. I'm just gonna preface that there is a public comment section later. If it's specific question to this, there are the the public information sessions, I think you're gonna need to ask at that time. There's not a public session right now for comment. Well, she's going to be leaving the meeting, yes. Oh, so you're saying if there's a public, yeah, but during public comment, it's not a question answer period, so. Love you. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Could we allow a simple question?
It would have to be a motion made by the board and voted on by the board, but typically we do not because if it's a specific question, she can go to an information session to get it answered. But I will leave it at that.
And you said you saw hands, hand out here? Or hands, like, okay, not like online or
No, 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 we don't have that ability.
All right, well, I would make a motion to allow uh, a public question. If the question can be answered, then you can answer it. If it can't be answered, then it could be answered at a future public session. We'll give you heads up on what you need to know.
I second the motion for the reason that we have a policy in here about public comments. It's very it's, that, that policy is very, um, puts us in a, like this very defensive posture. We're not a place where we, uh, we have a lot of public participation, so I think we should encourage it whenever it's, it's available. And so that's why I'm seconding the motion.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Let's take a vote.
Any discussion?
Discussion, yeah, sorry, any discussion?
I'm a little uncomfortable on this one because we do have a policy and we've made two information sessions available. Um, and Will, Steph and I are working on a public night to have conversations about that. Sorry about that. So on this one question, because we had, we, we anticipated need for conversation and we have got that in place. Think it might be more appropriate to leave this issue for that.
Well, I, I'm only pushback is we have a communications goal to, to use many forums and many outlets to try to reach and engage with our community. If it happens to be, this is one of those forums, then we should embrace it when the opportunity for a public to ask a question on a relevant topic that's fresh in everyone's mind is forwards and further, further and so forth that goal.
So then my only pushback again would be that you mentioned we have a policy and if you want that So then my only pushback again would be that you mentioned we have a policy and if you want that goal of changing that, that should happen through the policy committee.
Well, the policy offers an opportunity to make exceptions to the standard policy by making them a note, motion, having it seconded. So we can always adjust that if we agree to do so at any time for any matter, for any reason.
So.
The policy says.
Even though we've got three times already slated that we could talk about this, you want to have another one tonight?
Well, I want to hear the, the question like, uh, Anna, is one person who has one question, there's not fifty people in the room. And I don't know if the person is going to be able to attend those sessions, so it's here and now and I say, let. Embrace the public and when we can, that's my rationale for support.
I agree, I am counting on the public with the question to not be taking up a considerable amount of time.
That too.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright, let's take a vote, those in favor of having. Alright, those opposed? One opposed, six, four. Alright, we will.
I just abstained.
You abstained, sorry, Ms. Peters is an abstention. Alright, please come forward, just remember it is a public comment section, input section, it's not necessarily a given take. Yeah, that one's underneath.
Close.
One more.
Thank you, I, I didn't mean for you to take up so much of your time, just to ask a question, I was just hoping to have an opportunity. I appreciate the work to improve. Laura Taylor, I live in Amherst, New Hampshire, sorry. I appreciate the work to improve, uh, when we had in power. Uh, there was no way to know how the grades were actually calculated because it had. Multiple ways of calculating it and it was proprietary and. Very complicated, Power School last year at least enabled parents to see how the grades were complicated. Calculated, which was nice, yes. And it's nice to see this year a continued improvement on. That, all the effort made. My main concern is. Going from an input of point five to an out point, an output of plus or minus point oh oh five. And your inputs have two significant digits, your outputs have three, which. Uh, if you understand the rules of significant digits, that's not allowed. But I understand you're trying to take something that's qualitative and make it quantitative and, and I agree with all of your. Qualitative goals. That you're trying to accomplish through this software. My questions are related to the software and how it works and I did reverse engineer. How Power School calculated grades last year, I did share it with Dana, we talked about it quite a bit. And I will do it again this year. I'm looking forward to it, but I have to wait until Power School populates grades for me to use them. To recalculate and see what Power School's doing. I wanted to make one comment that was directly related to the board's involvement and that was. Not this year's transcript, but for the juniors, two thousand twenty-four graduates having. Now that it's been clearly established that linear is better, the nonlinear for. Grading, which we're moving toward, which I understand and support. Taking the number off the transcript seems like a very logical approach and just having the letter grade instead of the numbers. Uh, another district in the state, um, just last spring, well. Prior to last spring, they were putting numbers on their transcripts. They had so much feedback, uh, from colleges and problems with parents. The board changed and they revoted to take the numbers off the transcript specifically. Over this issue and I just wanted to point that out that. Having numbers on the transcript may be confusing and if our communication is to be clear to colleges. That issue might be reconsidered. I wanted, um, I'm sorry, I have one more question. At the grace period, I guess I have two questions. I appreciate the effort to. Have a grace period and. I'm just nervous about, so he can, even long before we ever came here was. Very much about growth and I'm worried about, uh, how students might be penalized. For excused absences and. Other things that should be protected and is there any confusion in the grace period and the due date? That whole adjustment concerns me as a parent. My main question is, I trust teachers. At the end of the day, teachers have been evaluating students for a very long time. And I want to know, does Power School have the ability to accommodate a teacher's opinion or? Judgment at the end of the day after all of this is input and Power School spits out of grade. What? Flexibility does it have to accommodate? If the teacher feels that the student deserves a better score?
I'm just answering that last question or I'm talking about.
I'm not answering, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you don't.
And, and to keep in mind for the information.
Got it.
And for the communication. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for all of your hard work. Appreciate it. Okay, um, one thing that Christie alluded to, um, which I did, was able to, I was able to book the Amherst Town Library. Um, and I spoke to Victoria, so November, November. Let's try September, September twenty-sixth from six to eight PM at the Amherst Town Library. Um, we are going to have our first communication session with the public, we're going to start. With one night, I'm going to book another one up in Mont Vernon. Once I call them, I get that on. So I spoke with Victoria from the Amherst School to School Board and they're interested in joining us. So it's going to be a combined Amherst and Sohegan, Sohegan, so I want to invite the public to please come to the Amherst Town Library. Again, September twenty-sixth, sixty-eight PM, we'll be there to help listen and we can answer questions when we can. And otherwise it's a taken information for us in order to be able to respond appropriately and in a proper format. Um, but I do want to invite everybody to come, come visit us, we're here. Right? Okay, next on the list is policies. Anna, is there anything you want to preference take control of this one?
So I think, I mean, these.
First read, right?
Sure, these were, and there's a whole, you have the whole list of them, um, I, I don't know, I mean, I think we can do it almost as a consent item, can't we? Uh, we went through them all at the SAU, um, meeting last month. There's a couple at the end, the only thing I wanted to say is that obviously. There's a bunch of G policies that right now we're not doing anything on. Um, and so they're just going to say that the policy committee looked at them, that's mostly just to make sure there's no required update, something that's come through. Um, that where we needed to do on those. Obviously, if the PPC raises those or that comes up in the PPC committee or anything like that, those could be looked at separately at that time. And the G policies at the bottom, uh, GBCDR, GB. GAA and GCC. Um, I just want to be clear that the way I understand it, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but because this is the first reading, but because they're G policies. This is our first reading of them, but then what will be happening is we'll be having a meeting with the PPC just to talk with them about. This is why we're doing the recommendations, get any input they have before there's a second read. I know there's a PPC meeting and I think it's the twenty-second.
Yeah.
I mean, my. And I am not going to be there, so I'm hoping, I mean, I think the hope is that we'll do it at the next one when I can come.
Yeah, my, so my preference is honestly, because these are all G policies per se, I would rather not even have them as a first read. They're just, until we go over with PPC. I would rather not even have a first read on them personally because. We've not done any work on.
So for those last three?
All, no, all the, the Gs, I think.
Even the Gs that say we're not doing anything?
Well, the reviewed, are those then you?
I mean, there's a bunch that say reviewed, we're not taking any action and all that, all that means from, um. The policies committee position is that we looked at them. Yeah, I went through them, I made sure they weren't like conflicting with other policies, there wasn't a reason we needed to flag them, there wasn't a reason we needed to do something on them. There wasn't, uh, you know, a change in the RSAs that was impacting them and so nothing. But nothing was happening other than that we were noting that we'd looked at them. Just the policy committee had looked at them.
And specifically Sohegan representative at the.
Right, yeah.
Yes, Steve. Right.
And would that include BB, BC? You skipped that one.
Yeah.
Bottom of page sixty.
Yeah.
And then, um, then we will.
Until.
Yeah, GB. The two, the ones at the very end, we've got the emergency policy for personal protective measures that I think would go with your top group.
I think we can go ahead and resend.
And then, right, and then GBCDR, GBGAA and Gs. Sorry, GCC is Mont Vernon only, so it doesn't matter, but those, those two GBCDR and GBGAA. Will take to PPC and then bring back to the board at a later date.
Yes, that's where I was going. Yeah, that's where I was going, I didn't want to put them into a first read automatic, so thank you for that. Those clarifying, clarifying, so, um, does anyone have any? Comments and we did a first read, do I? Anyone have questions on specific policies?
To make it clear, especially for Dana or whoever has to transcribe this, can, can you make those motions separately, like just make the first one?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, we're going to go back and do that, I just want to go through these first, the first round of policies as a first read that we're going to. Accept as a first read, I want to go through those first since there's actually potential comments.
Sure, I just thought we could make the motion and do it in discussion, but no, okay.
That's actually probably the proper way, why don't you go ahead and make the motion? Thank you.
I will second that, but I have a proposed amendment, I would add emergency policy for personal protective. Oh no, it's not a first read, so that'll actually end up being a fourth movement, alright, I withdraw my amendment, I will second the original motion.
Alright, so first by Mr. O'Keefe, seconded by Ms. Goulet Zimmerman, discussion.
Yeah, i- is that implied that the, that the strikeouts are not included in that list?
Yes.
I would think so, yeah, okay.
Yes, they're marked as sent back or SAU.
Right, okay.
Yes. Any?
Um, I have some comments on one, two, five of them.
Okay.
Um, BCB, BCEK, the first one. It says that the superintendent or the, or the superintendent's designee or the board. Are the, are authorized to make public statements. Um, there's no hierarchy there, there's no distinction about who's wheelhouse certain statements are in or who can approve or disprove. Uh, statements, uh, or whether, uh, board is required, is required to be notified before public statements are, are issued. Um, I think last year we had a. A troubling experience, I think as many of our public, uh, expressed about a public statement that was made. Um, that kind of surprised a lot of people. And this policy doesn't address that problem.
Okay. All I can say is, uh, policy committee representatives, um, was this discussed at all?
I'm looking, I'm going back to my Trello board on it, I'm sorry, it's been a while. We had many meetings over the summer.
Typically. The communication is part of the superintendent job description with the complete understanding that that would be part of the evaluation of the superintendent's.
Well, yeah, I mean, I. It's some, some, you can't put the genie back in the bottle, no, right, so. I would hope that our, regardless of what the policy says, I, I would hope that our practice would be. Public press releases are, I mean, it's one, it's one thing to send an email out to, to parents and students about. Happenings in school, snow days, I mean, that's sort of routine, press statements are not routine, we don't normally do that. So I would hope that the practice would be for the superintendent's office to send to the board members. Uh, the draft of the statement and solicit feedback so that we can try to work together and speak with one voice. As a practice, I, you know, you know, we could memorialize that practice and policy, but I'm, I'm good enough to have a handshake with. With someone, I'd like to be anyway, that that would be our practice.
I mean, I think. So I think when it comes down to it, we, the, I mean, this is just my view on it, but. We should be having a relationship of trust with the superintendent, that the superintendent is not going to issue a press release regarding staff. Because fundamentally that was where the issue came. I don't think. Um, and, and I, I hear that concern and I was without a doubt, one of the people saying I thought that was incredibly inappropriate. And that was not Mr. Chamberlain. But I think it becomes cumbersome and that's just my view, if we're, I mean, because a press release could be as simple as. Notifying someone about. I don't know.
Mass majority of press releases that have come from the superintendent's office are announcing hiring of administrators. That's the number one, I've done for adopted a new mission, board voted for facility project. And announcing new. That's, that's the extent of my experience, that's what press releases have been for.
And it seems like it could just be problematic to have to every time we're going to do something like that, circulate it through all of us, you know, we have, I want you to welcome. So and so, our new dean of whatever, and then it has to have gone out to the board, be, I, to me, that seemed potentially cumbersome.
I think we can use it as part of the whole process of like even evaluating superintendent and their, and their work. If we come across issues, but I agree, I think it'd get a little cumbersome if every board member had an opportunity to come on and every single press release, it's. I think we need to use it as part of the entire process.
Get the concern.
You understand the concern, so maybe the, maybe the corollary question is why, what's the value of having this policy, doesn't seem to be required by law. We have a, we have a practice, I mean, board members, I think, understand they don't speak for the board. So they're, they're not going to be making public statements on behalf of the board.
I think that needs to be stated, I think we need to be careful crossing lines.
Right.
Right, so I think it's fair to put this policy out there.
And I think there might be times in emergency situations or where something sudden is happened, where there is a need. To have a prompt announcement and press release and if the board can't be reached. And the chair has to act. Um, and again, you know me, I'm a big fan of we should all be consulted on this and this, you know, so. So I say that with my full, um, full resignation, but with recognition that there are times where I think it's necessary. And I think we should be, we need to be saying who is, who can act? I mean, the original, the original one that was changed from said the board chair is solely responsible. And we added, you know, in the absence of the board chair, then next senior member, again, trying to address what are those, what might there be an emergency situation? Where something has to be pushed out and, you know, we can't reach Stephanie, so we, we come down, you know, we move, we move down. Um, so.
Right. I mean, that's fair. Curious about that, um, why the most senior board member and not the vice chair down to the, the, the current leadership? No, not as the way senior board member is defined.
The most senior board officer.
Yeah, it's, it's officer.
Most senior board officer.
Yeah, so if they.
The most senior in time as a board member, okay.
Right.
Bodies on the floor.
Yeah, so that's right, right, I mean, we've got a problem if you're coming, if by the time it hits me. Yeah, so that's right, right. I mean, we've got a problem if you're coming, if by the time it hits me, um.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, what the policy was, by the time it reaches me, the person who has to make the press releases is the least of anyone's worries.
Okay, well. And then the next one is um, B G A A. Um, I, you know, I think this policy, this is about uh, policy development, adoption and review for the, for the public who's listening. Is this uh, you know, formulates our policy committee at the S A U level. It has procedures and stuff. I think it's all quite fine. I, I think what it, there needs to be a paragraph, there should be a paragraph in here that says notwithstanding any of this, any board at any time for their own reasons. Um, can, has, has, has the authority and to uh, adopt, amend, rescind policies. Because that is allowed, and that is this, I don't think any board would want it to be implied that their power is usurped by this policy. I mean, the purpose of this, about having this is to try to make cohesion among a, a, a three district S A U, which is valuable, and the policy committee provides a valuable service. Um, but if, if any one of the constituent boards felt compelled to adopt a policy or rescind or amend the policy. Um, and there was some resistance somewhere else, I mean, there's, there's nothing. There's nothing that this, I, I just, there's, there's no mechanism for anybody else. We are the governing body, so we have that authority, and I don't want it to, to seem like we're. Uh, ceding um, our, our authority in, in this policy. I don't think, think the other boards would like that either.
So you're, so the concern, if I'm hearing it correctly. Is that it's fine having a policy to set out, you know, how we, how we appoint the policy committee board, the process for which, the process for which a policy is adopted. But maybe we want an addition at the end that says, kinda like, nothing herein is intended to limit or remove the board's ability to. To rescind, adopt, to adopt, rescind, or. Otherwise, I'm just writing this down. Amend its policies as the board finds.
I mean, there, there's, the language in here is approve, revise or repeal policies. So.
What are you reading it from?
I'm supposed to say, I thought it's, I was reading.
Section three.
I think what, I think what John's saying though is that that applies to if there's something. That, like, say there's something that applies only to our, to Sohegan, right? That are intended to apply to a single district bypasses this process.
Like our G policies, for example.
But I think, okay, go ahead.
Well, but this is limited to policies that are intended to apply to a single district.
Right, cuz, cuz some of these, and the whole idea has been to try to, try to get some uniformity across all three districts.
A laudable and noble suit, no doubt. But, but it is, there's just that at the end of the day.
Yep. So what about? G one on page three of that first read. Suspension of policy process. The board may adopt, amend or repeal written, written policies at any meeting by a majority vote of the board member attendance, provide the public notice of the pro, proposed action was given at a previous board meeting, which is required. And that each board member is notified of the proposed action. For purposes of notification, a policy agenda delivered to each board member is deemed sufficient if it identifies the policy to be acted upon. I mean, isn't that, isn't that doing exactly that?
It is, I saw that in there.
Adopt, amend or repeal?
It's weird that it's under the suspension of policy process. It's like, it's like that paragraph should be the preamble for this whole thing. Like, we have, we attempt to act together and as one district, that says our, this is a strategic goal, it's a laudable goal. However. Any board may adopt, amend or repeal a written policy, and you can just write, read that verbatim and then go into, yeah, we will attempt to follow this process to uh. Uh, for harmony amongst the districts. That's the way I, I would.
I would also point out that under that policy two, it says on matters of unusual or unexpected urgency, the board may waive the second meeting limitation, limitation and take immediate action. So again, to address, just so everybody's on the same page here. I, I don't know. I mean, my opinion and uh, others are welcome to disagree with me is that this, is that that would cover what we need, and that basically are saying this is the process most policies go through. But this board has the right to say, hey, we're gonna suspend that process and act ourselves on, on our policies because we feel like it's necessary for some reason. And it's adequate, but if others feel differently, we can, you know. We, we can. I'm happy to, to address or take it back to the policy committee if that's what um, the majority wishes.
I mean, I could read it like that as, you know, there's a uh. Uh, headings don't, aren't interpretive, right? Generally, the general rule of interpretation that heading, headings aren't meaningless. So if we're, just take the words on that paragraph. And um, if, if that's what the interpretation it means, then I'm probably fine with it.
I'm gonna think the heading does, does matter, but it says, look, you can suspend the processes that are set in.
And do whatever.
You can say you don't have to follow these policies, policies and do this instead.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay.
All right. All right, what's the next one?
Yeah.
Got my Trello board up.
B E D H. Oh yeah, this came up tonight. Here's the one, Kristy. Um.
Can I make one comment before you start?
Yeah, yeah.
My thought, and I know we talk about this at the S A U, but because we do not have the technology available or in place, I'm not even sure we should be passing this policy until we have the technology in place.
So we have to do something with this policy because the RSA now requires the maximum of thirty minutes for your public comment.
But then we need to pull out that tech piece until we have the technology available. I mean, I hate putting it in there and just say, oh yeah, we'll get around to it, but if it's in that policy, even just, you know, even if we say, oh, but we're suspending that piece, mo, the public's not gonna read, they're gonna read the policy, but they're not gonna see it's, this part suspended of it. So I'm a little worried about having that technology piece worded in, and we don't have the technology in place to do it. That's my only worry.
What they said.
And that's.
May, may.
May accept.
May accept live comments.
I thought it was may.
Yeah. Know where that's headed.
Committee trying to cover it to say may.
Yep. Worried. That'll work. Hmm. How quickly are we looking into getting technology for this?
As you know.
I know. So John, go ahead.
Oh, my comment was, was um, uh. I, I agree, maybe the, the may permissive language is probably sufficient, although I, I hear your point, it should be clear, like. It could be better drafted that.
That's my only, where people are, cuz I get it, I, I like the technology in place.
Right.
Right now, we're.
Right.
Slammed with enough work going on that. It's one more thing to look into, and we will get there.
This just seems to permit us to do it, not require.
I just wanna be, okay.
Um, my only comment on was, was we, we ask the public to identify them. This says, speakers shall identify themselves clearly for the record. We ask for two things, your name and your town of residence. It said that for the um. For the electronic communications, but not for the in-person communication, so. Why wouldn't we say, speakers shall identify themselves clearly for the record by identifying their name and um, town of residence?
It's there.
Where?
On the next page, under virtual public comment, if you go down to number four.
Right, virtual, yes.
About the in-person.
Oh, you're saying we don't have it on the real one?
No.
For the, yeah, for the general rules of order, so.
Should match.
It should be there, yeah.
Do you think that's a small enough little?
Yeah.
Change that we can maybe pass first read with that addendum, and that can just be pushed back to everybody?
I, I would, it's not a material change, it's just a clarification.
So under rules of order five.
Uh, four.
Four? Oh, speakers shall identify them clearly for the record. Um, by stating their full name and town of residence.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. And I'm sorry to do this.
That's all right. Yep, one more.
Hold on. There was a, an important comment I forgot about, and it was like, where is this other policy? But it's about the policies. We should all think about this, which is. Uh. Where is it say, oh, it's um, F E F G F ten. Approved policies become effective immediately unless the motion to approve the policy or the policy itself includes a specific implementation date. Here's a problem. The policy isn't good if nobody knows about it. So.
What are you reading? Where are we?
Number F ten. Saying approved policies become effective immediately, unless they specifically say otherwise. So we approve the policy tonight. It's effective when we walk out of the room.
Yep.
But it's not posted anywhere. It, well, it's not. What, well, no, 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 I don't mean hypothetically, when we do the second read and we pass the policy. What?
For example, when we have the mental health policy that we.
Which, any policy, effective immediately. So I guess, my.
You're worried about when it gets.
I just want it, like, somebody, it really lights a fire under somebody's task as to the next business day. Updated on the website, boom, or even that night, maybe, if possible.
So let me tell you what we talked about. We, we actually talked about this, and it's, it's a little difficult because. All with this, with this issue with all three boards, reading and approving. It's going up on the website. Ideally, what would happen is we go up on the website with all three boards listed across the top and the S A U, so that anyone looking at it knows that this is the same policy. We don't have our meetings on the same night. So if it's getting posted, like Mont Vernon has their meeting, they pass it, it gets posted, someone has to remove the other names.
Until they.
And then when we have the next meeting and someone posts it, they have to, so what we talked about is, and what I think, and Mr. Chamberlain, correct me if, if you recall this differently. But I think they talked about putting, um, there, there's gonna be like a, on the page where you search for the policies, where they're doing the new committee, saying these are updated on the last day of each month. Please see board minutes for updates that have may have occurred during the month. Um, because then.
There's a notice component to that.
Right, cuz then anyone who goes there knows, like, if I think something happened, they, they, it is in the agenda. These are all recorded and posted the next day, so anyone who really wanted to see what happened with the policy could, could go through there, and then the minutes would be pushed out in the next agenda packet. So there's, there's a way for people to find them. It's not as easy as it's there immediately. But there were complications with the getting it there immediately, because we found some that were up that had not passed here. Now occasionally, it's still gonna become an issue, because uh, particularly, I mean, we're gonna become an issue. Um, and everybody's gonna have to work around that a little bit, because with our, of our extra step with P P C, we're not necessarily passing in the same month that the other boards are. But, you know, occasionally, they're gonna have to just deal with that, and it'll, it'll go out saying Mont Vernon and, and Amherst, and it won't have passed us yet, and then we'll, we'll jump in. But for the most part. Um, hopefully, that's not happening. Hopefully, there's meetings as much often as possible in between, and that's not an issue, but that was, that was why it's not getting pushed out the very next day.
Okay, well, the note of, it's, the notice solves the problem.
Yeah, like just.
It may be a difficult path.
Right.
But it's, at least there's a notice.
Right.
We update this website every thirty, or at the first of the month or something.
Exactly.
Look at the meeting, then it's for anything that may have happened in between.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, good. Thank you for that clear, uh, explanation. Um, J I C D A A.
J, J I C.
Staff student interaction. Didn't we? Do this one last year? At the end, why is this back?
So committee voted to change policy to note changes on G B E B B and change header, Sohegan Cooperative only.
Yeah.
So.
We are the only district that passed this one, and they know none of the other districts had the same language.
Right.
Oh, okay. So why does it a first read if it's just changing the header? It's already been passed.
So I don't know the answer to that, although it is saying, well, I think it's because of the integration with G B E B B. Because it, it. So, so the proposed one, I believe, and I hopefully I'm looking all the right things, says up in the right hand corner, J I C D A A, also G B E B B.
Right.
Whereas if you go to. The Sohegan website.
Says G B E B B.
G B. It says what?
So he website should only say have G B E B B, I believe.
J C D A. A. J C D A. Yeah, no, it says the same. Um, Steph's in relationships, Sohegan. Sohegan. Did you all pass?
Yeah, we.
Oh, yeah.
We passed this one.
Yep, we had P P C input, we had N H S B A input, we had.
With G B E.
Legal inputs. It took almost uh, a year to go through the process to get it right, and it went through a first read and a second read and.
It was.
And we celebrated.
Our own school board members with lots of detail and input by various lawyers and other sections.
So but, so, okay, so hold on.
So it might be that it's getting through the rest of the districts. And it.
Hold on, let me try to find it here, cuz I'm, I'm J I C D A.
We were passing at the S A U level.
No, I know. Oh, okay, yeah, so, so the issue, I think. Hold on, let me go back. So the issue is not J I C D A, the issue is G B E B B, right? From when I'm looking at the policies, hold on. G E. Jesus Christ. G B E B B.
Did the other districts have a J I C that was different, and they're just changing it to match the Sohegan policy?
There were some. Adopted G policies. I'm just trying to find the most recent Trello on it. Um. And what we said. Oh, yeah. My note on the trailer just says this just needs to be posted to the, to the website. You had your first read on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and it passed on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Just needs to be posted.
Okay, so we don't.
So you don't, we can remove G B E B B. And.
J I C D A.
And J I C D A already references C G B E B B, and you're saying, so I don't think, I think we can remove G B E B B.
Since we already passed it.
Well, and it's, it's got the, the heading is both.
Right, I mean, the heading's right, and it said it was passed. It said my notes here in Trello say, from me, just say to Abby on the seventeenth of last month, this just needs to be posted to the website.
Okay.
So I think that's.
Not a first read.
I think that is error, and I would amend, I would make a motion to amend the motion to remove G B E B B.
From.
Slash J I C D A A from the first read if that.
A second amendment, uh, motion.
So we'll, we're gonna, is everyone, okay, so that's a, a motion to amend the motion to remove J I C D A A or G B E B B. It was seconded by John, a discussion on removing that. All in favor of the amending the motion? Okay, we've amended the motion. All right, and do you have any other questions?
One more.
One more.
That's it. E, B, C, G.
E, E B C?
Yep, E B C D, communicable and infectious disease diseases.
Yeah.
Um, I, I like this policy, I think in a lot of ways, it, it supplants the emergency policy we have by, by recognizing. Um, infectious diseases and what we do about them. And I know Jessica had, Jessica Hinckley of the Mount Vernon School Board, um, had extensive conversations with nurses in the school system and. And they provided their feedback, which was, which was great.
Uh huh.
My worry with this is if you look under the procedures, if it is communicable diseases. If it is communicable diseases suspected. Part two, the response. I mean. You just scroll, look how long this is. This is a lot of procedure. My worry is. That we don't do it and we get accused of not doing it. Like, and, and should we be doing it upon receiving written consent from a parent? Uh, or in the case of an employee, okay. The school nurse will attempt, will not a permissive, will attempt. To confer with the treating healthcare provider, if any, in order to determine any significant medical facts concerning the diagnosis of the disease. Or factors of affecting possible transmission of the disease. I mean, that's a lot of work for a nurse. I think if, if you've got flu season or you've got COVID outbreak or some other thing happens. Are, are school nurses willing and should we ask that of them that they reach out to, um, healthcare providers and, and do investigation as to the nature and extent?
Did you just say that Jessica passes?
Yeah, what she did, she did.
I would say they under spread it and under.
I. I'd like to assume that's true. I just want to put it out there for broader.
Uh, so.
Uh, that's my, was my worry about this from the beginning.
So I was.
One example, it, this thing is replete with procedure that is thick and heavy and. And, um, detailed.
There is that, I would agree. Um.
Not usually.
If, if we look at the beginning under policy, under A. That then, um. It starts out, uh, there's a reference to RSA, uh, two hundred, full colon thirty nine. That permits exclusion from school of students who exhibit symptoms or contagion or hazard to himself or others. Um. And so the idea behind this. Uh, as I recall from, from the meetings was that. These are, this is what we're going to apply if we're sending someone home, if they can't be in school. Um, so it's not necessarily, oh, my gosh, this, this kid coughed when he walked by or someone sneezed or something like that. We now need to go through all this. Um. So I'll just point that out. The rest. Oh, there's a missing space. So is there designee typo, I think, but, um. I mean, the main thing is, I guess, I, I, I have deferred to the nurses. Um, in it, I, though I understand the concern, I guess, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. Um. Other than that, there was a lot of discussion with, with the staff directly. And I think there was a concern about wanting to have procedures in place so that if someone did need to remove, be removed. There was a way to do that. Um. So. If there's concerns, um. We can send it back to policy committee.
I mean, I.
I think it would be helpful to come to, come to a policy committee meeting and with the specific.
I, I, yeah.
Um, I think they'd welcome that.
Right.
And, and I just, I don't.
Right now, I say.
Right now, I don't feel like I'm in a position to say what those changes would be, but I would welcome.
And I'm not either, other than, other than the general rule, and I think Steve, who is a policy minimalist aside, if I'm stating your position.
I understand.
Would, 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 I mean, all this procedural stuff. Should be gone. We want to say. The, the themes, right? If you, you can be, A, you can be removed from school if you're. A danger to yourself or others and communicable disease is one of those things. Um. You know, we'll protect your privacy. We'll, you'll have rights, you know, you're not, um, but, and here's the way to get back in school and the nurses have a role and other people have a role and you're going to be contacted. And then. The nurse's handbook has all of these procedures what they follow to, to what they do in these situations. That's what I'd prefer to have it. So the policy is about a page as opposed to. However, many six or eight pages this thing has.
I, 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 I mean, I share that concern.
Okay.
As I said, I. This was how it came back from them. From, I mean, for the people who'll be implementing it, and I don't know, do you recall anything different about that? That I'm, I'm missing.
No, this is just where we are. I think we'd agree with you, but this is where we are.
This is right.
And the nurses have it and, you know, we have dreams of handbooks and, and procedural places. But right now, policies are backbone and having this in the policy.
Is more helpful to, to, to staff? Okay, well, that, that's the case.
I believe so. I believe Jess did vet and I believe the nurses have seen it. Christine, I think worked with them as well. So I think, I think the proper was done, but I agree with you in spirit, but I think this is where we are today.
Okay, okay.
And I think it went to legal also. I mean, yeah, it, I mean, it went to, you know, the eggard reviewed it as well.
That's all.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand.
I guess the, the, the. The note for staff is, for the nurses in particular, is that they feel compelled to send someone away for communicable disease. They.
They have a policy.
Fall with the policy, please.
And if they find, and I would, I would say that if, if any of them are ever looking back at this meeting and wondering if they find that it's cumbersome or not working or partisan working, I hope they'll bring it to someone's attention.
Yeah.
Cause I think it's the sort of thing we could definitely be cognizant of, of, of amending is needed.
Yeah, I wrote review annually in my, uh.
Yeah.
On my notes.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay.
See.
Um, anyone else? All right. So we had a motion that was amended. To accept the policies in the packet from B C E K. Through J L C J A that removes. Um, J I C D A A slash G B E B B. So we had a motion that was seconded. So those in favor of passing the motion. As a first read, anyone not in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, so then the, Stephen, do you want to make your motion on?
I have a motion to. Mark review vote for that. And I can page number thirty two B. I mean, B C. Through. Page thirty, thirty. Going through, you know, the policy.
I think it's. Correct.
Through G C.
Okay. All right. So that's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Guley Zimmerman, any discussion?
Um, just so that it's clear, um. When we say reviewed nor book, no board action, this board didn't review them, that we are.
Correct.
I think accepting the recommendation of the policy.
That we're going to take them to P P C, we're going to review.
Well, that no action is needed on, on our boards based on the recommendation.
Right.
Of the review that was done in policy committee that we will. Agree with that.
Correct. We're going to. At this time, nothing preventing us from reviewing them or changing it later.
And I. It's understood.
And I believe it's actually going to just get marked as like twenty twenty one reviewed by policy.
Yes. Right, as it should.
Not, not, yeah.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yep.
Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, good.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor of this motion? Any opposed? That's passes unanimously. And the third motion.
I'm going to use to send.
Yeah.
A second then motion.
And do we need to do the G B C D dash R? Want to do that?
I think that's next.
Oh, that's where we do it separate.
Pending P P C.
We have the P P C. Yes, thank you. Okay. The motion made. Who seconded?
I did.
John seconded, any discussion on that one? All right. Let's have a vote. Those in favor of the motion. None opposed, so that passes unanimously. We're moving on. From policy. Um. Because we've kept Kelly long enough.
Oh, Kelly.
We're going to do a quick before we do the S A F C piece.
Can I ask what, do we need a motion on G B C D R, G B G A A and G C C or not G C C, sorry? Yeah, okay.
That's why.
So we understand those were going to be taken to P P C and then we'll come back with them.
Yeah.
Got it. Um.
So there was a proposal. Who wants to kick this one off? And do you want to discuss it? Yeah, the baseball Kelly or?
Happy to, Kelly, you want to come up and speak to it too?
So.
Kelly's, uh, going to speak because she has been the liaison, uh, just, um, the driver of this from my standpoint are the two policies that were included in the supplement.
Mm hmm.
Regarding the acceptings of donations. Um, and as we get further down, just as a reminder, this will be a public hearing because it is more than the threat, it's in the policy. And also in, in Kelly's speak to this is, um. There is a, a request for naming, there is a separate policy that we have for naming, so that's there too. And if there are other questions, it is possible under, um. RSA ninety one colon A three Roman two D about acquisition and how that impacts the general good of the public. So if there's specific questions. It is possible to go into non-public and address some of the concerns as well. Um, at the, at the beginning of this.
Um.
Okay.
Um, could, could, could we for the benefit of the public hear the?
The proposal?
Just the, what's, what's, what's going on? And then everyone will have a general understanding and then we can discuss that in non-public. Is that okay? You're okay with you, man?
Yes.
Steven?
That's fine.
Okay.
Kelly, what do you want to?
Uh, sure. So the proposal, um, is for a, a, uh, baseball facility located. Adjacent to our baseball field. Um, that includes, um, two side by side. Seventy five foot batting cages. Um, with a roof, not fully enclosed. The, the sides will be. Open, um, like fenced, not like can just walk through and everything, obviously, but not like, not like sheet rock walls. I'm like, um. Not solid walls. So, um, yeah, two tunnels, uh, seventy five feet in length. Um, that would occupy the space currently, um. Kind of next to that big dirt pile. And, uh, where the two trailers are. Um, so obviously that will require some moving of things, but, um, and then, uh, a naming of the. Facility as well.
Okay.
Um, it is, and does baseball? In also includes softball.
Um. No.
No, okay.
Okay, so we had a request to go into non-public in order to do some discussion regarding this. Do I have a motion for that?
What's the, for my minutes, what's the basis?
RSA ninety one colon A three Roman two D, which is regarding the acquisition of public property.
Okay.
You're good. Okay, so I have a motion for Mr. O'Keefe. Do I have a second? Mr. Gonstraw, uh, roll call vote to go into non-public.
Okay. Right, yes. Wait, did we have discussion?
Well.
Can I jump in with a discussion question?
Go ahead.
Um, three, two, D. If discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community?
Yes.
Okay. I'm assuming we're going to find out what that might be. Okay.
The acquisition of property by.
No, and, and I interpret that as equipment, as property and building materials.
And we will have ongoing obligations with it.
Because we have to purchase.
That's that being one of the issues.
The construction materials and. Name it up. Okay. Can we?
Yep.
You want to do, okay, so I. Grund yes, let's keep going.
Anna Guley Zimmerman, yes, with some reservations. I'm hoping I find out why it needs to be non-public.
Yes. Done.
Glover, yes.
Okay, so that's six, yes, one, no, so that still passes.
Does.
And we're going to go into non-public. And then we'll come back for S A F C, sorry.
I assume as part of this process, we're going to be digging a lot more into what are the costs that the school would be incurring? What are the costs of upkeep? Are there other costs that we're offsetting that now we have that we won't need because we'd have this facility to use instead of other facilities? Um, and I don't think tonight, I don't think that's the purpose of tonight, right? We're way too premature for that. Um, but I just, I do want to say that. On the one hand, really, really appreciate the generosity. On the other hand, we need to look carefully at what's ongoing, if there's going to be ongoing. And, um, you know, I think back to the turf fields. And this expense that at the time, again, another incredibly generous offer, community did a great job pulling together and getting matching funds. It did not work out as far as maintaining costs. So I think we need to be looking at, you know, the, the idea at that time was that we'd have the funds coming in to pay for the upkeep and that is obviously not the case. So I think we need to be making a much closer look this time. At what are the ongoing maintenance costs? I suspect from looking at this that they're going to be much smaller than that, at least is currently proposed. And then we're not looking at something of that nature, but I just, that's my one thing. We need to look really carefully at that.
Care of that because I'm sure those questions will come up in the public hearing.
Yes.
So all those answers will be prepared for the public hearing and then the board actually would, would vote to accept or not accept. The donation based on those that, but that will be the public hearing agenda if you will.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, comments, Mr. O'Keefe? Perfect. Thank you.
Um, just have one comment is, is just echo the generosity. It's wonderful to have that. I'm, I'm just curious. Um, I like the, the, like, I guess preliminary design or conceptual designs. Um, you had mentioned that there would be open sided. I think when you described it, I don't necessarily see that on there. So I'd be, I'd be interested to see more. Details of the design concept, for, for example, use in the winter. You know, if the sides were open, that would be difficult. So if they're closable, that would be. Easy. So stuff like that, um, I'd be curious to learn more about some of those details.
Um, all right. Anything else other than, okay, so what we need to do is we're going to have to, following policy F F as Kelly follows up. Um, with our, our few questions and we start putting together all the information of understanding. What it is, is being built, the maintenance costs, and then understanding the entire process. We do need to appoint a committee, um, to look at the dedication and naming of facilities. I, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, we can work on it and bring recommend, recommended names to you in October.
Okay.
And the board can point at that.
Cause we need, yeah, some citizens.
Yeah, put that out and then, um, if interested, we can make some recommendations to the board. Um, timing, we're fine.
Yeah.
We're, uh, it just has to be done like certain, we're, we can name it.
And we need, we'll need a couple of. Uh, Jeff.
Do that next month if you want to have to bring, recommend the names to.
Do an advertise, yeah, because I'm like, because we, we also need a couple of district reps. Does that district mean school board reps? The district reps mean. School district reps. What is our? Right? Right. So it says district rep. So you want two school board members? I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, we want to, um.
You'll come back.
Remember, coaches. We'll, yeah.
Figure it out.
Um, if you could charge the superintendent to, uh. Begin the process of forming a, a naming committee, that would be great.
We have it also, we'll take a motion to empower the superintendent to form a committee to.
Take it.
O'Keefe, first.
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? Uh, anyone, let's say who's in favor of passing motion? All right, anyone oppose? No oppose? Okay.
When it's chicken dinner.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. And. We're going to S A F C. Mark, is there anything Sohegan Finance Committee related tonight? Okay, I know they're just had one meeting, they're coming up on a second meeting. I forget the date off the top of my head, but. It's to review how the budget process is going to the. The, the, uh, actual. Excel spreadsheet system and all that's going to work. But, but since budget has not been proposed. There hasn't been discussions on that quite yet. Uh, board resolutions. Can we do these real fast? Cause John, you're planning on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
He's planning on attending.
Right.
So I can summarize these real quick. Hopefully we can go through these quickly. N H S B A, um, um, resolutions. The. Twenty twenty two proposed resolution. So the first one. Uh, is talking about amending New Hampshire RSA ninety one A two, three B. To exclude subcommittees and advisory committees for a quorum to be pres physically present. So do you want them to be physically present if it's a subcommittee versus. They can be there via Zoom and physically don't have to have quorum in person. Were we in favor or not in favor of that to help John? Vote when he goes.
So it's our, our.
I mean, do we care if subcommittees are in quorum physically or would we allow them to meet via Zoom and or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Publicly accessible. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um. The second one had to do with um, funding for response to threat assessments and installation, uh, installation deporting, they. Wanted what, funding for this? They're hoping the state will help fund. The N H S B A Board of Directors does not support this because they already adopted something similar in twenty nineteen. So this would just. What are your thoughts? If anyone had a chance to read these. It's page one oh four. Yeah, one oh. Page one oh four.
In schools, I think so, more other moving to be able to, even less.
Yeah. Assist levels on developing, deploying, revising the plans on a regular basis, looking. So the, the N H S B A, their twenty nineteen, they said the delegates adopted the following resolution. N H S B A calls upon the United States Congress, the New Hampshire Legislature and local public safety agencies to prioritize the collaborative threat assessment and crisis planning with school districts. And further support legislation of federal, state, and local levels that protects student schools and district employees on campus. Well, that's right, this, what this is, is the school district brought this forward, they're the ones, no, never mind, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna speak. So we wanna support what the N S, N H S B A says because they.
They're basically saying that they're not supporting it because we already have a resolution that basically says the same thing.
Correct. So. And the reason we, we don't need to vote on any of these, cause it's just telling John, so, I mean, if.
I mean, my, I read through these, I, I was fine with the N H S B A. Stand it, stance on these, there's only eight proposed and maybe similar number of, of ongoing, none of them seem particularly weird.
No.
Or troubling to me, so unless somebody objects, um, we should maybe go through them for the record, but.
Just follow.
I thought the N H S B A recommendations were pretty, pretty decent.
Thank you for your service in doing this.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I always go, love, go to Concord. Give me a chance to get to the Barley House, you know, for lunch.
So, I mean, if we wanted to propose just supporting the N H S B A, if anyone did, and if everyone had a chance to fully read through these. They're pretty straightforward, if we wanted to say, support whatever N H S B A says or if anyone has.
So.
I mean, I read through them, I don't know.
My only one and.
Yep.
Is uh, the one on number four from dairy on food insecurity.
Mm-hmm.
I can't imagine what the downside is. To.
Of asking for them to support free lunch.
Right, um, we know that many of our students, these meals available to them, be it resolved, the state and federal government seek and provide viable, sustainable, permanent funding to provide a school breakfast and lunch at no cost to students. I mean, I.
Or we wanna say, hey, we'd like to see our state, like push for our state to fund free breakfast and lunch for everybody in this.
Well, this is state and federal.
And federal.
I mean, we can't do anything about it, but we're telling them, look, we want you to make sure food's available to students and.
We're hoping you.
Well, that's a good point because the rationale for not supporting it that they say is, we already have eighteen. Statements of belief related to school funding and three that address school funding, but what they don't say is whether any of those really deal with food. So if you have eighteen plus three continuing and none of them uh, address food, then it sounds like you need a nine, a nineteenth and a fourth.
It's a little separate from school funding, right, cause I think you're, and I think you're right, because all the others, I believe, have to do with.
Keeping the lights on.
Funding for the state, as we all know, um. But, you know, I, I, I think it's a, an issue that should be high on and stay high on the radar.
Was that one separate?
Found out that there was a lot of more need around the state than we thought. Um, or maybe was being recognized. And since this is a statewide issue, I would be in favor of that personally.
Okay. My question is, it actually seems like the resolution though is recommending that we provide breakfast and lunch at no cost to all students?
Mm-hmm.
Like that might be um, a big ask.
And, and it is a big ask. Um, it's an issue I know that's getting looked at nationwide, different locations on how they're gonna handle it. And it doesn't require it, but I, what's the downside of saying, look, we think this is important and this should be happening?
I agree, except there's also a lot of conversation about the quality of lunches, so I'm hesitant to ask that we open that up to everyone and it not be a good lunch.
So I know what happened last year at least.
The past couple of years.
Oh my goodness, all this time.
My thing has not been on, I'm so sorry, I hope people could hear me, I know I'm loud anyways. Um, I know what happened last year is there was only certain things that fell within, like you, you had to get the designated lunch. And if you wanted to buy the other items, and I know this because I had a daughter who almost always seemed to buy the other items, um, you know, that was obviously on the parents, um. So I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. First we'll stop it. If they had a fruit or a vegetable.
And, and the milk.
And a main course and a milk, it became.
Re, reimbursable lunch.
Yeah, it's the a la carte stuff, you have to get once, one of everything for it to count as lunch, if you come in and just buy a couple, um, so a la carte is not counted as a meal, but that's what you just described, yeah, and sometimes, cause like the a la carte.
But so if someone only got a, a milk and an apple, that didn't count, you have to eat what you didn't want, that's terrible.
We had things like muffins.
Wait, and, and there's some days that he hand them it so they get it for lunch and they throw it away, we don't like that. I'll second that.
I'll second. Okay.
You, you guys can privately lobby me until, up until the time of the delegation, the delegation convenes.
Well, you're gonna hear there, what, and, and yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that on pretty much all of these because you're gonna hear the discussions pro and, and you know, for and against and amendments and all of that live and I don't, and we're not. You know, we're kind of armchair quarterbacking already, um.
An alternate is allowed to come too, if you want.
When is it?
Um.
Over first.
Data, it's on the top, yeah.
October first.
Right, yeah, early October, I can remember the date. October one, eleven AM, conquered.
Yep. All right, you guys can work it out.
Work it out.
We're going to move on for last thing, no, no, cause there's really no vote. This is more just discussion to help support John and when he goes to say, what do we kinda stand for?
Exactly.
I think then procedurally, you'll have to rescind your motions. Just like, let's move. Okay. Um.
I don't know, October first, is that a Saturday?
I think I can come, I will double check that.
All right, um, so. On our uh, agenda is the, uh, Mr. Chamberlain has a request for local critical shortage.
Sure, um. Over the, uh, this year and over the last few years, there has been uh, more pressure on hiring, hiring credentialed people um, all over the country. Um, the state has uh, uh, multiple opportunities, for example, um, if it's a critical shortage area and for an emergency one year, we can hire a teacher to teach for one year without a credential. There's also site blade based learning plans that on critical shortages areas that we can work, and we have a number of teachers throughout the S A U, including South Hegan who are working. Um, with mentors and specifically designed coursework for site based credential plans. Um, if there is a um, critical, if there's a short, if, if we're, the district is hiring someone who does not have a credential. That is not on a statewide critical shortage area, um, the board can declare a local critic, critical shortage. And that allows that person to work on a site based plan within our district. Um, so the state has removed, uh, for example, administrators, uh, for most of my career. A school administrators were on the critical shortage area and would follow the normal site based plan. But recently that was removed from the critical shortage areas, so the advice from the D O E is to have the board create a, a local shortage. Critical shortage and then the process re-engaged, so we can talk more specifically about the specific people and the circumstances. Um, but, and then we can come out, but eventually we will need a vote to um, support, uh, Ms. Grund to uh, write, to send a letter uh, declaring a local critical shortage, enabling us to support. A staff member in obtaining a credential. Um, so the, Mike and I talk a lot about this, Christine and I talk a lot about this, especially at South Hegan. The fit is the experience and the fit is important, sometimes that fit comes with an applicable experience, but not necessarily the paper. And we have worked, uh, I, I've worked in my fourteen months in this district, worked with seven teachers on developing of those plans. As a superintendent, to be honest, my first seven years, I didn't have anyone on an office help based plan, but in the last few, my last few years in my previous job, we had five or six, so this notion. Of, of people coming in and obtaining credential through alternative site based specific, that is growing, it's necessary for our schools. Um, we are not at the stage where long term, we're not saying we don't need credential, but we are working diligently to support people, which I think are. Um, creative, applicable and rigorous um, plans to obtain credential. Um, so we can talk more non-public about the specific case, but this is a process that is supported by the New Hampshire, um, D O E. So all four is, uh, but now it's, the all plans have changed the names to site based learning. So it's, uh, so, um, the only difference is all site based learning that I could do without you are anything on the state critical shortage list. This is an area of our employment that is not on the critical shortage list, so I need the board to declare it as a local shortage, so then we can do an all four a site base. That's the only difference, and if, if that works, that's great, then um, we have a letter drafted, you did, the, the action item would be just to support Ms. Grund's declaration. Uh, and a communication with the New Hampshire Department of Ed and declaring, and so he can school district a local critical shortage. We do, that would be great. Perfect.
All right, discussion.
And I'm assuming you're telling us that we, we need this, if we're gonna fill this spot, we don't have other qualified people or equally qualified people who do have the.
We, we, during this process, we did not have anyone who was the fit necessary to be successful in our school.
Okay.
That I'm hundred percent.
Then I will support the motion.
And, and that's, um, yeah, this discussion point, so. Trying to do the due diligence in public. Um, what you're saying is that you sought. Candidates through the regular.
Yes.
Credential pool. And the candidates that, that came forward during that process were not satisfactory in your estimation in terms of fit, as you described.
Whole package.
The whole package. So you'd like to expand the pool through these former art alt for site based, site.
Yeah.
So it's called site.
Site based, uh.
Site based learning plan, process, um, in hopes of attracting a more.
So.
A, 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 a better suited candidate for our culture here.
So I just wanna make sure the order of operations is clear, we have uh, brought someone on board. With um, part credential. Um, but we want the full credential to allow the full and required for the, for the additional credentials to be the site based learning. So we have a credential to perform the, or the key components of the job. But we would like to expand the components of the job, in order to do that, we need the site based learning plan, in order to that, we need a local.
I see, so you, you have found the right person.
Correct.
And you wanna shore up their, their, their documents, their, their paperwork. Okay. I can support.
I just wanna be clear.
Absolutely, I, I'm.
We, we clarification, we can do it when we're going on.
I don't really care what the position is particularly or the, who the person is, um, knowing that you followed this process and, and that you found the right person, they just need some help with the documents, I mean.
Hundred percent, and, and this addition credit, uh, credential will help our school.
Clear discussion? All right, so we had a, we had a motion, second, let's call a vote. Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Nope, that's a seven in favor. Thank you very much, um, nomination? There's a couple.
There was, um. Science, uh, we finished, I just need memorial, Katie Hurtline? Uh, I sent that out, if you remember, I sent that documentation, including the nomination sheet as well as the resume, uh, after our last meeting, you picking up what I'm putting down? We just need to memorialize that with a vote tonight, Katie Hurtline, science, how we can high school.
I make a motion to elect the nomination of uh, Katie Herline.
Second. Okay, first by Mr. Glover, second by Ms. Peters, any discussion? Let's call a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, so seven in favor, that passes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, public comment? Anyone? Yeah? No public comments, so non-public.
Yes, please.
I ninety, I gotta remember what it was under. RSA ninety one A three two C?
C for reputation. Just two items.